Everybody's on it.
Come on in.
Don't be shy. Oh, you're shy. She's never shy. We know that. Sorry.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Bowman, Honey communities to the board of directors to order. It's Thursday, December twenty first at seven P M. Roll call, please. McKenna.
Michelle Murphy.
Here.
Ryan Meyer.
Here.
Sharon Markma.
Here.
Gary Berklin.
Here.
Rick McDaniel.
Here.
Mark Schlichting.
Here.
Jim Swetson.
Here.
We need to do the pledge of allegiance. Everyone will see it.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In case anyone's wondering, Chris is on Zoom with us. She does not want to spread her love to any of us. Can you hear us, Chris?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Visitors, any visitor communication. We have some visitors, but they'll talk to us in just a little bit. I need a motion to approve or amend the agenda, and as McKenna said a moment ago, we have a couple of amendments. There was an amendment to item five E, five K, excuse me, employment personnel resignations and recommendations, which she provided us with a copy of. And then there is also an amendment to add the Justin's agreement, the yearbook agreement, to the consent items. It wasn't in there at all, correct, McKenna?
It wasn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be item L.
That's K.
No, it'll be L. K is the employment personnel.
That was J on the line.
That was J on the line, too.
Yeah, if you look at.
It's K on the line.
If you look at the paper when it's K.
Oh, I missed that.
What else got put in it?
Yeah, what's missing from my.
What went down from J to K?
Yeah, I don't know what happened. What's missing? How did we get a three lettered?
Can't do this to us.
No. We add stuff and we don't know about it. Well, I've got minutes, financial statements, bills as C.
First reading?
First reading, for early grad.
And there was a bidding in there.
Bidding.
Purchase.
Purchase.
Purchase bidding using federal funds, that was, that's E.
E, right, early grad, preschool, student assistance.
Student's assistance program is what was added. H was added.
That's H, yeah. I as fundraisers, J as donations, and K is personnel resignation recommendations.
So H is what was added, student assistance program.
Oh, that was not.
In your one that you've got online.
Got it.
Everybody get that?
Now I understand.
Thank you.
So now we have L, which is the Justin's yearbook agreement.
Got it.
Given those amendments, looking for a motion. Jim?
I'll second.
Rick? All those in favor of the consent items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, moving on to reports. First off, we have a student showcase on a Lego League competition. I assume that's how we have some smiling faces over here. Danny, are you?
Yes.
So then am I able to project to, is it on? Trish, is it on, do you know?
It is now.
She turned it off for our picture. Oh, she turned it off for our picture. Let's, got it.
Alright, so this is the first Lego League challenge team from this year. This is just a few of the members. A little bit that I'll say is we had two teams participating. We had a before-school team and an after-school team. We have about twenty total students, ten per team that participated. We had grades three through six represented. And Team One's overall score for the rounds was one fifteen, and Team Two's score was two seventy. And then that picture up there is just us at the actual competition. So there was the mission results. As kind of a comparison, the first year that we did it, I think our total score from both teams, like if we added everything together, we got like fifty. It was rough that first year, but you can see like we made growth this year. And the kids did a really great job. And so, one of my favorite pictures is Camila Duran grabbed the mic as a third grader and spoke to an entire gym full of people about our project. You can see some kiddos working on a robot.
Where was your competition held?
So it was in Webster City. So that's all the pictures I have, and then I'm just gonna kind of let them explain to you what they did with robotics, what the meetings are like, what the competition was like, and then the robot will actually, they'll do a little run for you. So, for the meetings, we met after school on Wednesdays from like three thirty, I believe, to four thirty. And the morning group met in the morning, I'm not sure what time.
Seven thirty-five to eight-ten.
And then, like, so, we took a while to like get the robots up and running. This is the morning groups, because arm's broke. So it took a while to get it all coded and like stuff to set up so we can practice and stuff. But, we ended up through all at the competitions. We ended up for the afternoon group, we did three tasks. What, two tasks? No, three tasks. And so, like, Michelle, can you move us back?
Can you guys introduce yourselves?
I was just gonna say, Kelly, can you introduce yourself and then everybody else do the same?
I'm Kelly. Jayob.
I'm Piper, and I'm a sixth grader.
I'm Casey King.
Isaac going to grade.
Thank you.
So that's pretty fun, though. So, what we did is for, trying to see. Um, so we did this one, which is where we have to push like an orange thing in, and then it spins like a singer person around to face towards like the middle area of the board. And by accident, I ran into that, then got another task done by running that one.
Sometimes that works.
And, so, for the robots, so we did a couple coding where we like set it on afterward on building all that stuff. In Michelle's room, we set it on the mat and started programming it to go to the places we needed it to go. Which was that for our team, that was the last night, and we coded for thirty minutes. So, kinda surprised how we did on that. I'm not sure how long they coded for.
We just started coding on the last practice. So for like a whole hour straight, we were just encoding. Just a whole hour.
And, so, at the competition, so, um, at the competition, there was three runs for each team. And we, at one point, we were versing each other, like the morning and the afternoon group rehearsing each other. I'm not sure who won that round, but all I know is that we versed each other. Anything you want to say, people?
Okay. Uh, the morning group, so how we built our robot, we had, we targeted for three tasks, and we didn't successful. So for the first task, it's, um, it's this build, and it's a three scene around. So there's one scene in the front, another to the left, another to the right. And the task was to make it turn so it changed scenes, and by doing that, pushing it. So I coded it, so it would turn around, so this here would push into the building, so it actually changed scenes.
Jayob, do you have a little controller that runs it, or you just turn it on and let it go?
Turn it on.
You can run it if you want.
When do you find out your tasks?
Oh, you get to choose.
You get to choose?
Yeah. We get to choose whatever tasks we want, and there's this thing called, if you match the color, I'm not sure like what it meant, but we ended up matching the color one time, and I'm pretty sure it was worth maybe points.
Do you find out the day of the competition, and then have to code it, or is it ahead of time, like before? Ahead of time, so you guys have time to code it.
Yeah. We had practiced for, I believe, since October.
Yeah, we started practicing for in September, so that they released the, what the mat is gonna look like. They released videos of how to successfully complete each task. And so then that gives the kids ideas on how they wanna build the robot. They have to do some cost benefit analysis of, you know, which, which tasks are gonna be the easiest to complete but give them the most points? You know, is this gonna take too much time and only give us ten points versus that might not take as much time and it might give us fifty? So, they had to do a lot of that strategizing before we started building and coding, on what tasks they wanted to do.
So you want me to show you?
Yeah, sure, you can run it.
This is for a problem, isn't it?
It should do something. The only reason we're not getting it on table is because it will fall off. So, um.
It's pulling out the ability, turning around so it could push it, and you had to push it three times. So it goes back three times. Yeah, so that, and then that's the ending of the program.
How do you guys like working amongst the different grade levels?
We actually love it. Well, that's how I feel, but I'm not sure what they.
They're gonna tell me anything.
Oh, yeah. We had some arguments, but we just, yeah.
You worked through it, huh?
Yeah, so we had, I believe, a couple of third graders?
Yeah, we had a couple, like a couple of third graders, a little more of fourth graders, but it was mostly a fifth grader than a sixth grader.
I was trying to convince Michelle, and she wasn't moving, to, uh, let seventh and eighth grade do it, because the highest grade you can do, do it for first Lego League is eighth grade.
So, when we had third graders up there talking and answering questions, other teams had eighth graders of answering questions. And we did have a gentleman come up, who was one of the judges. And he came up to me and said, these kids, like, look out for them. Like, he, whatever, and it was a judging session, I wasn't in, so they had to also do a project, and then they had talked to a panel of judges. And he was in the judging session that I wasn't able to attend. And he was extremely impressed, especially with as young as they were, with how much they knew about the robot and knew about the coding and. So Piper, if you wanna talk about what the project was, because we had, they had to do an outreach project as well.
What do you know about?
It's cooking.
Yes.
Um, so we had to do, it's like solve a problem. And the two problems that we were, that we got to pick from were cooking and reading, and we ended up choosing cooking. And so we wrote about how like people like didn't wanna cook, and so, like, because there was bad, because they couldn't find, yeah, because they find a lot of bad recipes online and stuff, unless they go to like websites, or, yeah.
So, we, um, got like a whiteboard, and we each wrote down like one popular and really delicious recipe on that board. And so, like, not like, would you get points for it? Yes, we did get points for it. I'm not sure how many.
Yeah, they didn't give us the judging.
But, we put three recipes on it. One was Piper's, two were mine. Um, the recipes were, uh, I believe, what's it called? Skell potatoes and ham, uh, mac and cheese, and stew meat.
Yeah, for my group's, uh, for my group's project, uh, we had the same, um, thing. Not cooking, but instead of cooking, we just did instruments. So we thought of, maybe kids don't have enough money to buy an actual instrument, so make your own instrument, so it's cheaper, but you can still play. So we just wrote down the I O Y, um, and instructions.
Have a question, how long did it take you to build your robot?
About like, two, for us, it was about two, three months, I believe.
How much did you work on it each week, or do you know?
Uh, I wasn't one of the builders, I was one of the, I was working on the board and also coding. So, I wouldn't have known.
Yeah, we're trying it like every week, every Monday.
Each team met for about an hour a week. And so, starting out, they built the pieces to make the mat, so they could practice. And so, in the end, they probably spent a month on the robot. And that's adding stuff, changing stuff, you know, taking things off.
Very impressive.
At one point, uh, the afternoon group's robot, we put a little too much weight on its, uh, like the backside of it, a little bit, so we had to, and it wouldn't move, so that was like a learning experience for us. So we had to like remove it and get something lighter to put on it.
Any other questions for this group?
I have one, yeah.
Well, yeah, how do you do it?
I can't. I'm going to seventh grade.
If you had to do it over again, you would though.
Oh, I would.
I have a question. You said you had some disagreements. How did you solve those disagreements? Did you duke it out, or?
We compromised. We compromised, we voted, and then so.
Oh, we voted?
And then some of us got angry.
Okay, I'm just curious how you resolve your differences. You might teach us adults something.
For my group, we didn't vote, we just found a way how we can do both our ideas in the morning. How we know their idea in a little hours, so everyone's happy.
It's a great idea.
That is awesome.
Pretty.
Both are awesome, actually, both methods.
For the afternoon group, we had like a team of builders, a team of coders, and a team of like the board. And so like, it was just the builders that had to find out those disagreements.
Okay.
Anything else?
So, actually, at the competition, we realized that one of our coding pieces has gotten deleted.
Oh, my goodness.
So we had to recode it.
Really?
Yeah, for my group, we had one program that worked. So before we went to the tournament, we did some programs at, just in the classroom. We only had one working. The one we got there, that one was deleted. So we had to do it all over again by the tournament. And we had to take turns with other teams using the mat. So it'd be harder to actually simulate and how it would react.
That's stressful.
Yeah, so if you see the picture on the left, that was the kind of re-code what they already had coded.
Oh, wow.
Getting a little frustrated. And then, on the right here is the other team. So both teams, for whatever reason, ended up with a piece of their code getting deleted. And so they.
Oh, my hair's in my face.
They could have freaked out. They could have freaked out, but they just.
Want you to work under pressure.
They just started re-coding it.
Uh, the only reason that, uh, we learned how, like, our group learns how to not code off, like, run it on the table, is because, uh, someone accidentally run it off the table, ran it off the table, but I caught it, so I saved it. So, I'm just glad that's not all on the gym floor.
Yeah, there was. And another thing about, um, so we had to take turns with other teams, using the mat, a solution we used. So here on the, here on the left, when the other teams had to use their turn, we did something where there would be people standing at where we thought the buildings would be at. So we would just program around the floor and hope it was an accurate guess.
That's a, that's a very smart idea.
Yep.
Very creative. Thank you, guys, for coming. I.
Wonderful.
I'm very impressed. I think it's a great program, and I hope that you all continue to.
Is there anything that you guys missed or needed to do better?
For my team, honestly, in the beginning, we really didn't do anything. It was hard.
My question is not, not you guys missed, but something that we could help you with. That you're missing as far as material, time.
We're missing a coach.
Resources, a coach.
Yeah, that's a resource.
Oh, yes. That's a dagger, isn't it?
That's a dagger, Danny.
The only reason we could have done this and coded it is because of Michelle. She was an amazing coach. And. We don't have a coach anymore because she's moving.
Alright.
Now he's up today.
Yeah, everybody's on the same page now. Alright.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
It was like technical dilemma.
There's a lot usually that, man, deal with that stuff all the time now.
Hey, I heard they're looking for a customer. They need a coach. Hey, there you go, Captain.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us now?
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Oh, we're so lucky.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job, Trish and McKenna. Thank you for solving our technical dilemma. Okay, moving on to principals' reports. CK, I assume Mark's gonna nominate. You go first?
I'm sure he will, as he always does. Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Just a few things. First of all, we were all ready for three thirty to hit today. I'll just let everybody know. Sickness infestation going on right now, so it's the best thing probably that could happen. Went a lot out sick, and so I don't think it'll be good. Everybody gets a little rest. Beginning of the week, we started with our band and choir concert. It's a great job, like always. Never, it never fails, always have a good band and choir concert. Yesterday, Wright County came, the sheriff, Michelle, Joe, came and presented to the kids about cyber, cyberbullying and social media and that type of stuff, so that was a good presentation. We heard some good conversations afterwards, kids talking, things that they don't think about. You know, that we think it's okay to take a picture of ourself and do whatever we wanna do with it, and then, real, believe it or not, it's not gone, even if we delete it, so. Lots of good things, and I think they were at the elementary as well, earlier in the day. And then, like I said, this week, we've had door contests, so if you're walking around the halls and the doors were decorated, we put it out in the public, they voted. Actually, Mrs. Mites' door is the one that won, so the kids got prizes for that. Just lots of, lots of fun things to end before we go on break, and then when we come back, it's right back to, we have winter sports week, the week of the eighth, so as soon as we get back, the next week will be winter sports week, and love our cake auction and our royalty and all that good stuff, right away, and a few basketball games in there. And so, yeah, we'll be back at it. We're gonna rest first and get healthy and then come back, so.
You have a theme for winter sports yet?
Yeah, it's something in the wonderful world of, I don't know, something with Disney.
I won't, I won't hold you to that.
I know, I don't know. It's something to do with Disney. I can't remember. Like, the first day is Monster University, so you dress as your college team, and then, Beauty and the Beast, and, um, I don't know, I can't remember this, to be honest.
Wonderful world of Disney.
With all the things on your mind, I'm not gonna hold that back. Okay, thanks.
You got it memorized, right?
Or dreams come true.
I just, I saw it where, on Facebook.
Yeah, it's out and about. One other thing, esports is going again, and they're doing Overwatch, and both JV and Marcy have been defeated, so. Today, he had to pull in all the reserves. I think he had maybe one or two starters. And so we had to pull other guys in to help, and girls, and even the manager played, and they still won, so they're doing really well, too, so.
Yeah, it was due to sickness? Was somebody else sick?
Sick, and started, they had to go to the parents out of state and that kind of stuff, so. Yeah. Questions for me, anything?
This is a busy place. Just come here for a couple days. Very busy place.
That it is, that it is. I mean, and you all know, they went to the dinner, the Mrs. Mites. Oh, they, they had their sales, their, their Christmas sales and all that, that they sold their truffles and their cake pops and all that kind of stuff. That's one busy classroom. If you wanna go to a busy classroom, you go to that room, so. Yeah.
Mark, I'm just gonna say I'm disappointed that you didn't come dressed like the elf tonight.
Yeah, yeah. I was afraid that, I, we talked about dinner, actually, between the elf costume and pajama day, I figured that first thing I, first time I do that, then some parent's gonna come in and wanna talk about it, or the students, academics, and I'm gonna be dressed as an elf, and that's.
I did not take any pictures, although it was tempting, I thought.
There are pictures out there, and a video that exists.
There's a video.
Finding out, in and out of the display case as an elf. Kindergartners get quite a treat. They wake me up, and then they are surprised that I'm actually alive.
Oh, with a real.
Because they have elves in the shelf in the room, the little ones.
Yes.
Then they got to see a life-size. Yeah. Probably not my best moment, but it's, it is worth it. The kids love it.
The kids did love it.
They do have a good time, so.
Star on stage, here we go.
That will not happen at that school.
Uh, so, basically, you know, a lot of what we did was just, did a lot of learning this last month and a half since the last board meeting. But we did have our, each of our grades participated in music concerts, music and instrumental concerts, because they do a lot of instrumental work, which you're gonna get to see next month, with our ukuleles and boom whackers and all the other things that they do at their concerts. So we had all, all three of our groups, we have a five-six concert. The older kids go first, that was in November, and then two in December, the three-four group, and then the K-two group. If you'd like to look at them, they're on the Facebook page. Trish has managed to grab my tech skills into the twentieth century. I'm not sure about twenty-first, but, so I recorded and put it on Facebook, so grandparents and aunts and uncles that can't get to, they get to see it, so that's always nice. Kids did a great job, as always. I always had a fun time. And then we did have our, I said, Elf Michelle came and handed out candy things yesterday. I did wanna comment on the, on the law enforcement, uh, social media group. They came and talked to our fifth and sixth graders. And they were very well received. That's probably the most engaged I've seen those two groups of kids be in a long time. It's, you know, they're in fifth and sixth grade, and to sit for forty-five minutes or an hour and listen and, and talk to law enforcement and county attorney about what's going on, it, it's in their wheelhouse, though, because this is what they do, you know, they spend time on Minecraft and Fortnite and, you know, social media and Snapchat and all that, hopefully not too much Snapchat. But, uh, the kids were interested, they asked a lot of good questions. Is it Joe Hooper?
Jeremy Hooper.
Jeremy Hooper.
Yeah, Jeremy.
He was the chief deputy, did most of the presentation, and at some point, he disclosed his age, which is not anywhere near old at all, he's like forty-something.
Forty-five, yeah.
And he told the kids that when he was a student, that he didn't have computers, didn't have telephones, didn't have iPads, whatever. And some kid raised his hand and said, "Did you have electricity?" But, uh, he. But uh, he, he said, yes, they did have electricity.
Running
But it was, it was a good conversation and, and you know, again, they can kinda ramble once in a while, if the sixth graders can. But, but they really, I think it was eye opening to them that there is, you know, this is a place, even in Belmont, Iowa, where you can be subject to the pressures of um, I don't think they were as much worried about like the kidnappers and all that kind of thing that, as they were. People taking pictures of each other and then sharing them. That was really eye opening to them. I think that was probably the one that it was nice to have someone other than me tell them that or their teachers tell them that, because that's, they hear that from me a lot and from the teachers, but um
Based on their facial expressions and some of the, just the wheels were turning and you could tell they were surprised by some of the words that were being said.
Absolutely.
They were definitely thinking.
So I wanna thank Michelle and the group that came and Mr. Carl, County Attorney, came and so it was a good meeting. And then today was our annual dodgeball, uh, adults versus grade levels during their special time. So they can get to throw dodgeballs at us for about 35 minutes at a time. Uh, I'm gonna eat some Ibuprofen before I get home. But uh, it's always a good time. No one got hurt, so that's always good. Since I got to work conference and said, yes. That's all.
I guess they call that number first.
No one got hurt. And anyway, so that's where we're at. And we'll come back in January and uh we'll do our next round of fast testing in mid-January to see kinda how we're, how we're doing to be able to.
Thank you. Any questions for either CK or Mark? SiAC committee reports. Um, you have a written, written report or was it passed out? And I think Gary is gonna ask to talk on that.
Yes, I am. I want you to go to uh, I believe the second page where it talks about reflective questions. Just a little quick overview, we had a lot of participation from lots of folks at our first SiAC meeting in about six or seven years. Um, and so this is a, a regeneration of something that's been on, on the radar, but not ever completed here at Belmont for many years. And what this is, is a, a community uh and, and staff-based operation where we look at and try to determine what are the things that we can do better? And to provide that input and insight to the current staff and most importantly, I think to the board. It gives us some, uh, it, it raises questions and gives us some, some things that we can address that they think are important to improve the, the, the operation of our school district for the benefit of the kids. And so I wanted to highlight some on page, the page with all the bullet points. I think uh you can read all the nice accolades that everybody said, nice things. We were not asked to talk about negatives. Otherwise, we'd had three pages. No, no, we wouldn't have had three pages of those. But we had a lot of really nice things said about the kids and our staff and our facilities. And everybody's really proud of this district by and large. I mean, that's what I heard that was said by all of the community members and the participants in the SiAC meeting. However, I think it's important for us to look at some, and I'm highlighting, one, two, three, five of the bullet points that I think were interesting and, and came to light in our looking at the facts, the data. We spent time looking at data sheets. We broke into groups, looked at data sheets and then said, "Oh, here are some observations that we think are important to look at." Number one, it says our males and females, it's the first bullet point, number one. Are, are, are males and females performing at similar levels? If not, what might be influencing these results? Because what we're finding is the women are performing better than the men in our, in our tests. The test scores reflect that there's a slighter or elevated performance level by the young women than there is from the young men. So I think it's important to look at that. That's for something for us to, to digest and see is there's something we can do to alleviate that. Bullet point number three, it says, "How are we serving students already proficient with the standards expected at their grade level?" In other words, are we offering advanced education for those who have already are competent at their level? Are we challenging them to do something more? College prep? Or maybe it's advanced techniques within the same classroom that say, "You need to do better because you are obviously capable at this level. We need to encourage you to go a step further." Number five, how often, how much do teachers need to go back and adjust the curriculum when there are gaps in learning? Obviously, we've been talking about that here in this board, boardroom for a long time. You know, how do we track and figure out where are the gaps? And how do we fix those, especially after what happened with COVID? That put a big gap in about three, those three, first three grades. Those kids are cha, are still challenged today, it seems, from the data. Lack of learning that, that happened during that period of time. So how do we address that and how do we, how do we do something about that? The next one is bullet point number seven, says, "How are we supporting new teachers in learning the expected BK curriculum? What mentoring is in place?" Now, I think we board have a pretty good idea of what that is, what we are doing about that. But the public doesn't know. They don't know how we are working within our own system, bringing in outside help and especially with our coaches. We have coaches who are helping us do that within uh the cadre that we have. But the public doesn't necessarily know about that. That is something that we know because we talk about it here in these meetings, but not everybody else. The parents don't necessarily know that. So I think it's important that we communicate. The point is communication with the community about what we are doing. Um, obviously, somebody thought that was important to, to be brought up. Then point number uh eleven, is it eleven? Yeah. How many students are taking college credit courses? There's a great opportunity for kids to take college level courses. They can get rid of almost two years of college uh, of, of education by taking the college credit courses that are available. And if they're not taking them, what are, what are the reasons? What's keeping them from doing that? They could almost end up with a certificate, an associate's degree, when they finish high school. In other words, have two years of credit out of the belt. So if they wanna go on and do something more, they can, or they're almost ready to go out into the workforce with an associate's degree. Uh, there might be some, a couple of courses they have to take to do that, but in any event, we can do, we can give these kids a really bump start and that's what the, that's what the community was asking about. Are we doing everything we can to promote it? So the bottom line is those were those highlights that I thought were important, that were raised by our community members at the first SiAC meeting. We have another one coming up. We're gonna talk about bullying. We're gonna be talking about a lot of the things that happen in the school district that parents don't necessarily know about. And we'll just be discussing those, those concerns and then how we can, we address those and especially, as I said, communicate back to the people in our community. That's the progress I think we've made with SiAC. It was a really good meeting. People went away feeling really good about the first start of it. I was the only board member there, which is fine. I don't wanna overload with board members anyway. I think the important thing is that they're telling us, for me to communicate to you, what we can do to improve the work in our district. I'm done. Any questions?
Very good.
Just a quick, this was part of your meeting, outdoor classroom.
Yes.
Um, it dropped off the, the diagram of the windmill, um, which I think Kevin designed and so.
Kevin, did this one?
I think he did. I think he did, yeah. He's not getting credit for it, but I appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, I sure
And another photo, um, I guess they met with the Orion Energy representative, Matt Conny Madison. They're doing uh solar panels there and other alternative forms of energy there. Looks like it's gonna, they're working a lot in the outdoor classroom, so.
Do you know if we're gonna make money with our power generation?
I, I, I don't, I don't think that's in the plans, so if you can come up with a way, I'm sure no one would turn you down for that. Okay, thanks, Gary. Uh, super penance report. Chris, are you ready for that?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. First, I wanna thank Gary for a really great recap. And he's right. We, we did uh do some bullet slots at the beginning. Uh, the purpose of, of a SiAC is really to, to see how we can propel our district forward. And um, just a couple of good comments. Uh, I'm really glad that he mentioned the, uh, what are we doing for those students that are like above in their, their grade level standard. Uh, one of the things that you approved tonight in that very round is um to approve parents' life as a, a TED teacher. Um, TED teachers do a lot of professional learning that helps with differentiation in the classroom. So thank you for your support and next steps there. Also, um, you mentioned the mentoring, um, and communicating that, and I really appreciate that because in the community newsletter in December, we started to highlight our TLC, our teacher leaders who support mentoring and, and teachers that are already in the classrooms and have been. Um, and actually, one of our next steps, uh, we asked our TLC teachers, we're gonna do an exit ticket at our Willow Sweetie on January 15th. We'll be highlighting more TLC, what it is, what we do. Mentoring will be a part of that. Top 20 will be a part of that. So uh, we're already taking some of these questions and then making sure we're putting them to action. So Gary, thanks for, for highlighting those. Um, in that same light, I think about the thing you heard tonight with um our students with the Lego League, uh, the outdoor classroom. I brought those pictures to show that, you know, where even our outdoor classroom is bringing a lot of tech in. Uh, last week, um, our CK and Mark and contains from each building got together through a process called script to stumbling computer science options and what that programming could look like, um, baseball and, and how we have more offerings for STEM and science in, in our classrooms. So with that said, I, I do wanna show a video that we watched um to set our purpose for SiAC. I believe it really is a great overview um to help our board vision of critical thinking, communication and uh the, the things that we've set forth in our goals. So Trish, if you could help pile that up, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
There has never been a bigger force for change than technology. It changes absolutely everything about the way we live, the way we get around, the way we eat, even the way we talk to each other.
Thanks, thanks, Trish. I think, I think what I'll do is quick, just do a quick overview. One of the comments I heard the most in the SiAC meeting was from that video, "We are preparing our students for jobs that don't even yet exist. And so how do we do that?" And so really, um, as a board, you identify critical thinking and communication. Uh, there are other transferable skills, flexibility, adaptability, um, creativity, skills like, like those that transfer into any uh job that students might be having that we don't yet know about. So we heard a lot about big data. Uh, we heard about social media from our presentation with um the deputy sheriff at the district attorney office. And I think about how timely it is for us to have that in light of, of this video. Um, I also think about the conversations that CK and I have been having about online classes and college and career readiness. Uh, because uh hybrid work is the, is the model that is, is out there right now. So getting kids taking some online classes uh to prepare them for that is definitely in the conversation. Um, I think the, the other thing I wanted to highlight is just talking about some of the professional learning that's happened in the district. Um, we sent a team and I, I won't say a lot about that, but to the TLC conference. Uh, it's really an opportunity to um even take our, our data digs to a different level on ways that we use that information for intervention and decision-making, uh coursework and, and all of those things. So that happened and we'll be wanting to send more people uh later on. Um, I think the other thing with professional learning, um, I've already been visiting with Jen Peter. Um, she's very excited about the learning we're doing around the speed of trust and, and some of the other um just administrative learning that we're doing. And she is getting to join us on January 9th at our leadership team. So we're really excited to, to have that and be able to make some connections. Um, heading down on my uh record, uh technology and 21st century skills, um, there's a Iowa coding and emerging technologies summit coming up in February that will send and Emerging Technologies Summit coming up in February that will send someone to go and retrieve some of that information and bring it back to BK for implementation conversations. When you think about coding, you really think about AI and how it's changing the entire world of what coding does and might look like in the future. So we're wanting to get that into our conversation. Senate File 496, we talked a lot about tonight. We added a librarian on our personnel agenda. Lori Ekop will do a fantastic job. She does have librarian experience at the public library level. She, we have connected her with Carrie Teske at Central Members AEA as well as Anne Thompson, so she'll be getting lots of support in that new role. We have our policies that you approved earlier in the year on site. We have our live link for our electronic catalog for the elementary and all of our parent communication materials. I did provide you with a handout of an example of what our internal documents for informing parents of what materials we're using in the classroom that came with your superintendent's report tonight. Lastly, with the senior art munification, our next exhibit, we're going to call Chase Away the Winter Blues, and we're putting pieces that are a burst of color in so late January, the seniors will be helping add new art to the windows of the district campus. I guess lastly, thank you to our principals and everyone who helped with the holiday baking. We had cookies, palm cookies, and pine cookies coming in, and the teachers, I did talk to a couple of teachers that mentioned just how nice and how fun it was to walk away with some treats. So we thank our community for all of their support. And that's my report.
Anyone have any questions for Chris?
How are you feeling?
You know, not very well, but thank you.
Okay.
But boy, it hit me fast. Thank you.
Must ya. I just had dinner with you last night. I hope I'm not gonna catch it.
I hope you're not either. I hope you're not either.
Sorry, I didn't mean to pass it around.
It was CK? Oh, my gosh.
Pretty sure I did. So be ready, Gary, you're next on the list. I have my list made up.
Before we move on, Mark so graciously pointed out that we did not have a motion to approve the consent items. We got so caught up in the numbers and the letters and adding and amending that we did not.
We didn't do it, did we?
No, no, we did not.
Well, I'll move.
Second? Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, closed? Okay. Thanks, Mark, for keeping me in line. Okay, now we'll go on to Teresa has some reporting to do for us.
Yes, so I just want to update you on a few things that are going on right now. We're working on the safety grants, so if you remember, that is $50,000 for each building to make security improvements. That's funding that actually came from S-CO, but it's separate from the pots of money that we have been receiving directly. We are looking at the possibility of updating our video surveillance, so we're working on that application. The hope is to have that submitted in January so that we can go out, get the bids, and then actually start to work on that project. We're gearing up for the end of the calendar year. Fun enough, the Iowa Department of Revenue did release an updated W-4 form. It just came out, and like our software isn't even able to handle the updates yet, but they're working on that, and it will all be built before we have that first payroll in January. So if there's not enough going on, we're going to get all 100 and, you know, 40, 50 W-4s to update here within the next few weeks, too. Let's see, we are adding in a student assistance plan here at Belmont Clemmie, so that was actually in the contracts for tonight that you approved. So what's really neat about that, it's a lot like the employee assistance program that we added in three years ago, and then this is going to then be extended to the students. And they have access to services, and also everyone in their household has access to these services. So it's just really an exciting thing to be able to offer and to raise support for our counselors, our principals, the at-risk teachers, so that they, just another resource, another person who can help jump in and help with some of those things that we see in school districts and everywhere, really. Oh, and the last thing I just want to touch on is it's turning into scholarship season. This is actually a really fun, December and January are kind of fun for me because this is when last year's graduates, the class of 2023, they start coming back in, and they see me, and they bring their transcripts or their grade reports, and they can actually claim those scholarships. The combined award for Foundation 1 and 2 for the class of 2023 was $3,500. So, you know, they, those people have really put a lot of work into building that award so that we have that money to help those kids further their college education. And that's, that's my report for tonight. Did you have any questions?
Just quick, who's the provider for the student assistance program? Is that like a?
Employee Family Resources.
Oh, okay.
So it's the same company that we work with, and they're a nonprofit organization, which is why we can afford it.
Sure.
So, yeah, and they have great resources on their website, too. If you ever want to check it out, it's worth a click around there.
Absolutely. That's great. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to action items. The first is application to School Budget Review Committee for Enrollment. Do you want to speak on that, Chris, or?
No, I think if you look on your, sorry, I just put that report down. Teresa did some reports for each of those. There's numbers in the packet. For each, for each of those, we just need to approve those individually.
Okay. Right, looks like the recommendation for the first one is to approve the free request for the SBRC, as they appear on each page. So we're looking at the first one. The is the at-risk and dropout prevention?
Do you?
No.
Michelle, do you want to speak a little bit on this and kind of let you know what these are?
Yeah, it's the increasing enrollment was the first one. Sorry, I skipped the page. Yes.
Yeah, sorry. So what happens here is the state of Iowa recognizes that our funding is really based off of one points in the year, and things change between, between when we take that certified count and, you know, throughout the year. So the first one that you're looking at is for increased enrollment. So these are students who are from our district, so the resident students, more kids now than what we would have had on the count. So then they allow us to ask for additional spending authority so that we can actually, you know, pay for teachers or pay for open enrollment.
Okay. First one we need to approve is the increasing enrollment.
Move.
Mark?
I'll second.
Second, Rick? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed? Okay, next is open enrollment out. I think that's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, move. Second.
All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then EL instruction beyond five years. Any questions on that that we want to ask Teresa, or a motion to approve that one?
I'll move to approve it. Second.
Brian? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Safe side. Okay, moving on to at-risk and dropout prevention grant. Again, does that, Teresa, do you want to visit with that?
Sure. I will just roll briefly. So this is something we look at every year. So what, what you're looking at is actually our plan for that funding for next fiscal year. It's, it's a local authority issue, and you can see throughout your packet exactly what we do with that money, but it's things like funding our counselors, offering our foods program, and some of those tracks that are not necessarily your core, you know, math, science type of tracks. And these programs have been working really great for us, and we just ask to be able to continue them.
Looking for a motion to continue the at-risk dropout prevention event.
Moved.
Sharon, second. Second, Jim? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed? Okay.
Does that need to be a resolution?
Oh, that a resolution? Oh, yes, because it's a grant. Sorry. Sorry about that. Yep, I didn't get to that page yet.
Forget that.
Okay. Roll call, please, for now.
Sharon Barkma.
Aye.
Gary Berkland.
Aye.
Rick McDaniel.
Aye.
Ryan Meyer.
Aye.
Michelle Murphy.
Aye.
Mark Schlitzing.
Aye.
Jim Swetson.
Aye.
All right, we're on to a transit van purchase, but that's been changed from the one that was in your online packet, and I think you have a new paper at your desk that's on a different van.
So I do have a request with this. This is actually the third vehicle that we have prepared for your packet here tonight. These move fast. I cannot guarantee that this vehicle will still be available tomorrow. So if you would be willing, I would love if you would approve this or a comparable vehicle with that recommendation coming from the transportation director.
All right, because we have to buy a used van, and it has to be a 12-passenger van.
It's in order to get a 12-passenger van, it has to be used. There's just this little loophole in the law where they said new ones cannot be 12, but used can.
Can be, correct. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Okay. Buy a van.
Get us a van.
What will we do with all that time that we spend looking for vehicles?
And I guess we should note, this is, this current order, or this current one is from what location or what? Is there a deal?
It's, oh, so it is actually from an auction site. So Brandon Allen, our transportation director, still has his license to purchase, so we are going to be paying his company directly, but he has no markup on here at all. It is for cost. He's just allowing us to use his license.
Okay, and it was local?
Yes, he did. He reached out to Richards a couple of different times, talked to them, and they just said they don't have anything available. I think at one point they had two that were already locked down with other school districts.
That's what I thought, yeah.
So it's just, yeah.
With the restrictions, it's probably really hard to find enough to go around.
It is.
Okay. That takes us to board comments, and I am going to read something I have here. Mark and Sharon are leaving us sadly. Maybe it's not so sad for them, but it's, we've enjoyed having them, and their input's always welcome. There were some comments made by some staff members, and I want to share those with everyone. Sharon, the comments made, Sharon will always be remembered for her passionate advocacy for principals and the best interest of the children of the Belmont Clemmie District. She listened and heard her constituents and represented her neighbors and friends well. Having served through years of instability of leadership, she maintained her own integrity and loyalty to the truth. Her passion will be missed. Sharon has been involved with the bargaining since I have taken the president role with the BKEA. This was from, obviously, someone that, she was always thinking about what is best for the district without disregarding what the teachers need. She will be missed as part of the board. Sharon cares deeply about our students and staff. She's able to think from many perspectives to offer ideas and what is best for the district. Her sense of humor always shines through. Her laugh is contagious. Thank you. And for Mark, I have some comments as well. Mark, we remembered for his wise and thoughtful reflection on all serious matters. He brought to our board a reservoir of knowledge and experience that we can all rely upon when considering monumentous decisions. His quiet, calm demeanor will be missed. Mark has always utilized his thoughtful approach to problem solving at every turn. He has a solutions-oriented lens and values multiple perspectives when considering what is best for kids. Mark's service over the years is much appreciated. He always gathered all the facts and took time to learn more about a situation or ask questions before voting. I always felt that made him a strong board member. And these came from our staff, so they appreciate your time that you guys put in. I think people have no idea how much time is put in as a school board member, so just hoping of your appreciation and the power in your comments to go.
Thanks for sharing.
Yeah. We appreciate all of your time and.
Oh, and you guys have plaques coming.
Yes.
Sharon, you.
I knew I could get it done.
That was her one last thing to get done, right, Sharon?
One of the plaques, yeah, that's good. Yes.
Oh, we're not adjourned here. You know what? Aaron, you and Mark, we can make a motion in the second for the adjournment.
I will move that this meeting is adjourned.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you both. Really appreciate it.
Michelle, may I say one thing?
You bet.
I got kicked off and Tricia and McKenna quickly got me back. Thank you, Mark and Sharon. I also, I believe that you're getting a paper copy of those comments. We also, if wasn't mentioned, we do have a plaque that's coming your way. It's kind of that check in the mail that it is coming, and we would be happy to bring that and present that to you for your years of service.
Yeah, you have to come back for one more. When it shows up.
Mark just took his name off.
He took his name right off the bat.
Yes.
Sharon's taking the whole thing.
No, I was just gonna turn.
You're taking the whole.
I did too.
Sharon, you can't help that part. I love it. I think we can take a two-minute break.
Can you pronounce the Latin, Gary?
Huh?
Can you pronounce the Latin for me?
Which one?
The adjournment on the term board.
Oh, without, within the day or without the day?
Yep.
Oh, sima day?
Sima day.
That's the Latin. Sima day?
Years. Gary's Latin.
We need a Latin.
I know he can do it. I know he likes that.
Taking a two-minute break. It's a party break.
Gracious, gracious, yes, you were a good member here. There is no doubt about it.
I appreciate you considering me the community affiliate.
Don't say that.
Anytime you're back. We need somebody here to have to do your work.
Here it is.
I think the give is.
I should probably give you this, too.
That's what I'm thinking.
You are passionate. Don't be cut. Yeah, I'll be. She was good.
Yeah, I have either. Congratulations.
She kept me calm.